Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. At pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public meeting of District 544, reorganization meeting to order. And our first item of business is to do the oath of office for Matthew Lemke, Natalie Knutson, and Steve Vigasa, and this will be performed by Superintendent Drake.
Good evening. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, you must be accountable to the community and must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Eddie?
Having signed the acceptance of office and the oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office as school board member of Independent School District Number 544, best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. Clerk, will you establish a quorum for us, please?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
There.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, do you have a second? Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is passed. Our next item is the election of our chairperson for 2020 Chairperson presiding. Oh, that's me, Suzy. For 2021. So, I am going to...nominations are now in order for the office of chair.
I nominate Melanie Cole for chair.
Melanie Cole has been nominated for the office of chair. Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair is closed. Melanie Cole is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so recorded in the minutes. Congratulations, Melanie Cole.
Thank you. We'll carry on with our agenda then for the election of the other officers. And I would ask if there are any nominations for the office of vice chairperson.
I nominate Missy Hermes.
I will nominate Natalie Knutson. Any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Hearing no other nominations, then, we will vote. First nomination is for Missy Hermes. Those who would like to vote for Missy Hermes, please raise your hand. And second nomination is for Natalie Knutson. Those who wish to vote for Ms. Knutson, please raise your hand. All right, then, the vote is for Natalie Knutson, and you are now elected vice chair. And just to confirm, Natalie, you're the only one that voted for...
Missy.
Missy, okay, I just need to record that in a minute.
Yep.
It's a little hard to see around the corners here, so thank you. Next nomination will be for office of clerk. And I will accept nominations for that office.
I nominate Missy Hermes.
All right. Missy Hermes has been nominated for the office of clerk. Are there any other nominations for the office of clerk? Any other nominations for the office of clerk? Missy Hermes is the only candidate nominated for the office of clerk, so I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct her to record herself as the new clerk. Very well. And the next officer for consideration is I am taking nominations for the office of treasurer. Does anyone have a nomination for the office of treasurer?
I nominate Kirby Anderson.
All right, are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Since there are no other nominations for the office of treasurer, I hereby declare that Kirby Anderson is elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record that he is the treasurer in the minutes. We'll carry on with the agenda, and I am seeking a motion to establish the school board's salary. We're currently at sub$475 per month for board members. And I would entertain a motion that we can pursue.
So moved.
All right. Missy Hermes makes that motion, $475 a month for board members. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second, and any discussion? For the record, I would note the additional stipulations that we have in our packet that, if so intended, Miss Hermes then to add to it. Basic salary covers all the regular and special school board meetings, work sessions, two retreats, two committee meetings a month, the conference. And separately, the certified contract negotiations committee will be paid a stipend of $500 payable once during each contract cycle. Any meetings outside the basic salary conditions will be set at $25 per hour. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Looking for a motion that establishes meeting dates, location, and time. I'd just like to note that we have the specifications, our usual habits in front of us as written down, and if the motion could include that information, I'd probably make a better record. So, entertaining a motion for meeting dates, location, and time. All right, and if you could, please just elaborate just a little bit, Mr. Vigasa, about the...
If the motion is to continue to have the meeting place be in the outer community room unless space pandemic restrictions require us to meet somewhere else, the dates will typically be the second, fourth Mondays during the regular school years, except through July, they'll be on the third Monday of the month. And in December, the meeting will be the second Monday of the month only. The summer meetings will be at 7:00 a.m. And then we do have a meeting scheduled on October 11, which is Columbus Day.
All right, thank you for elaborating, I appreciate that. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on it?
Do we need to say November, or can you say as written?
Oh, as written.
Well, you said July, and I don't remember, so I just...
Okay.
I don't know if it matters.
November.
I think the intent is what is written, so...
As written, here we go.
Very well. Any further discussion? We'll get there. All right, all in favor of the meeting dates, location, and time as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That's approved. I'm looking for a proposal as to the mileage rate for the school district for repayment. Would someone offer a motion in regards to...
I move to set the mileage rate at IRS-recognized rate.
Very well, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, take Missy for the second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. No opposition. We are looking for a motion that designates our official newspaper. Would somebody offer that motion?
I'm moved that we have the Ferguson Daily Journal as our official newspaper.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of designating the Daily Journal as our official newspaper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Is approved.
And that was Steve that seconded it?
Correct. Is...I am looking for a motion about the use of the signature scan to have the present scan be utilized until and when it can be available. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll start with that.
Great, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good. Looking for a resolution authorizing wire transfer. Would someone offer a resolution with the narrative regarding that?
I would offer the resolution for the wire transfers as noted above.
All right. And is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, and the portion for the record that's not noted is that the following business office employees are eligible Lee Stoltman for sales tax and bond payments, Payroll Manager Sherry Smith for payroll taxes, P-E-R-A-T-R-A, and HCP...or HCSP, accounts payable secretary, Marcy Clausen for rent and K-12 management, and accounts receivable secretary Kelly Nelson for the retiree payments and insurance. Any discussion? All in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Moving on, I am looking for a motion to designate our depository. Would someone offer that motion?
I move that Security State Bank could be our official depository.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second, oh, go ahead.
Natalie, you have a second? All right, any discussion on that?
I have to recuse from the spot.
Thank you. All in favor of designating Security State Bank as our depository, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Resolution authorizing the ability to employ legal counsel. I'll read the resolution, and we will take a roll call vote. Whereas from time to time matters arise which require consultation with legal counsel, whereas the school board may not have time to meet specifically to hire legal counsel for a particular circumstance that has arisen, and therefore a general authorization to contact legal counsel is necessary. Whereas the school board reserves the right to hire any legal counsel of its choice for any particular matter, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 544 as follows, that the superintendent or school board chairperson be and hereby are authorized to contact legal counsel as needs require. Would someone offer that motion, or that resolution, and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
And who will second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on the resolution? All right, Miss Hermes, if you'd please take the roll call vote.
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Next item of business is a motion to acknowledge participation of the district in the Minnesota School District Liquid Assets Fund. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kirby, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, so we will continue our participation in that program. Any discussion?
I have to recuse the board of representatives.
Thank you, true. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Strike that. We have before us the proposed 2021 committee representatives. And just looking at the representation, is much the same as it has been in years prior. Has anybody been sporting a desire to switch out of a committee or onto a committee? All right. If so, we can be fluid, I do believe, with this. But as the organizational meeting stands, would someone endorse the slate of committee representation as written? And offer that motion?
I'll endorse the committee slate as written and make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on it? All in favor of the committee representation as listed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And we have our proposed 2021 negotiation representative assignments. Similar narrative with the designation of which board members will negotiate with which groups. Is someone willing to offer this motion with the proposed negotiation representatives as written?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
And did anyone have any strong desire to consider a change of the groups that they negotiate with?
I'll make one change in the district-wide individual contracts, which means that Melanie Cole...
Sure. Do we need a new motion, do you think, then?
I can make amendment to my original motion to change Matthew Lemke Melanie Cole, District 54 individual contract.
Thank you. And I'll still second that, and Natalie still second. All right. And then any other consideration or discussion by the board?
And then just to note, next year, the only two that actually will be in the works is the certified staff and principals. The rest haven't negotiated this year, so the rest of the community reps will not more than likely be even called to work in that capacity.
All right, very well. All in favor of the motion, or the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And then the last item on that...well, not the last, but the next item listed for information is the proposed meeting schedule as delineated in Mr. Vigasa's motion to establish dates and times. So that's listed out for us. Last item on the reorganizational agenda is a motion to adjourn. All right, I'll take Matt, or I mean, I'll take Stephen, and then Matt for a second. Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Reorganizational meeting is hereby concluded. And now I will call to order the regular school board meeting, first of all, public schools, District 544. And clerk, in an act of due diligence, will you please establish our quorum? Certainly. Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
Kirby Anderson.
There.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved. Resolution on acknowledgements. Superintendent Drake, you want to...oh, wait, no, we really need to read it. I'll just...
It really should have a motion underneath it. There's not a motion underneath it, but there should be.
Yeah, and it should be just...
There should be a resolution.
And so, as has been the habit, will you offer this?
Certainly.
Missy?
On the one on the bottom, the thank you, the whole thing.
The resolution on acknowledgements? Just both paragraphs?
Okay. I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. And congratulations to Madison Longton in grade 12 and Olivia King, grade 11, for receiving fifth-place honors in the stock market game, SMG, this fall. They were advised by their teacher, Ethan Soland. The SMG is a national interactive learning program for students in grades four through 12, where students work in teams to invest a virtual $100,000 over a 12-week period. And a thank you to Roxanne Giza for her donation of three scientific calculators and one graphing calculator to the Kennedy Second Amendment School.
Very good. Is there a second to that resolution?
A second.
All right, thank you. And any discussion on the resolution acknowledgements? Appreciation. All right, clerk, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Very well, thank you. We'll move on to our board reports regarding the additional responsibilities we have to other school boards and foundations and groups. And I'll start with Kirby Anderson.
Okay, the Finance Committee did not meet this month, and also the Five Fourth Education Foundation. I reported that at our last meeting, and our next meeting is this Thursday at noon, so I will report you on that next one.
All right. Any questions for Kirby? All right, Melanie Cole, I'll report on the Special Education Cooperative. We had a meeting today, whereupon the director of the cooperative gave the tally of our unduplicated student count, and all districts that are members of the Special Education Cooperative were up with the number of special education students enrolled. Interesting since with the online movement that there's often been a decrease in the public schools. But anyway, so that count has been tallied, and then we'll just continue to move forward with that. She talked about how it's done and some of the courts with it. There was a narration about students with disabilities having a particular additional difficulty with distance learning and how the Special Education Cooperative is striving to make their goals measurable and to work with parents. There does tend to seem to be noted of just a little bit more dissatisfaction because of the nature of the difficulties that the students encounter. Bottom line on that is if it isn't going well, Special Education Cooperative Director Shannon Erickson said, "Give them a call," and they continue to work with it and try and explain it, or do better if that's what's necessary. So that was kind of the notation there. Rest of the board meeting was a review of the executive board activities from the last three months. So that was kind of a summary of what we did at the special education meeting today. Region One meeting last month was slightly uneventful other than a discussion about whether or not board, school boards can add a little bump to the teacher's salary for doing good work. That got a little bit heated. As one of the board members proposed that, we do that with the Region One board, but it is public money, and we did not sneak in a bump. For even though the teachers are having hardship along with pretty much everybody else, it's duly noted how well they're appreciated. So that was an interesting piece of discussion. The Activities Committee has not met since, for a long time. So I don't have anything to report there. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to Missy Hermes's report.
Our policy committee has not met, but the Staff Development Committee met on January 4th, so last Monday, and really finalizing all the plans for the staff development in-service. That's on January...yeah, yeah, this month. And so lots of really helpful, exciting workshops are planned, and staff, I mean, certified staff and non-certified staff are invited to attend any of those. And they're able to sign up online. That way, we can keep track of social distancing and things like that. It's amazing how much planning goes into a meeting now with how many people can sit in this room, and how are we going to lay out this workshop and so on. And so, really, a lot of thanks to the committee. They've worked really hard. And just, I'll just give you an idea of some of the presentations that are going to be available. First of all, the ripple, I talked about that. It's kind of a social-emotional, really to inspire teachers right now. Like you said, we really appreciate them, and it's hard work right now, and here's a way to inspire them. But also things like the English language learner strategies in the classroom for different grade levels, staff social-emotional learning, Thrive, suicide awareness, communication with students, grading in distance learning and hybrid for teachers. So just a wide variety of topics that teachers and non-certified staff can also sign up for and take part in.
Any other information, Missy?
I thought was the main part of our meeting.
Okay. All right, any questions? If not, we'll carry on to Natalie Knutson.
The Wellness Committee has not met. We meet tomorrow, but we are, we will be presenting for the teacher in-service about Thrive. And at our work session, we're going to touch on how that might be tied into some of our staff climate components. And then Buildings and Grounds has not formally met, but we got an update on the Lincoln School. We're looking at later February now for an open date. So we'll be discussing that a little bit in our work session as well.
All right. Very good, any questions for Natalie? All right, and then as we carry on, Stephen Vigasa? Oh, sorry, I skipped Matt, I'm sorry.
I don't have a lot to report, anyway. So Lays Country Service Call Board, we meet on Thursday of this week, so I have nothing to report for them. And then the Minnesota High School League, their official board has not met, and they will not meet until... and they will not meet until, uh, February. Uh, they did come out with a new guidance here, and I think it's been pretty well documented that the Minnesota High School League has kind of followed what Governor Walz, um, allows. And so there was an update to the plan on January 5th, and that was just, and in particular about spectators and then allowing, uh, people to go up to 25% of a venue capacity or 150 attendees, whichever is the lesser of the two. And that's for indoor and then outdoor. It's, uh, 25% of the venue capacity or 250 attendees, again, whichever is less, lesser of the two. And so that's probably the biggest thing that they, that he talked about. I think, I mean, sports are going right now, so, um, winter sports, and so we'll see. And hopefully, we can get through a season, so.
Any questions for Natalie? And now to you, Stevenson.
Uh, Meet and Confer in current time has not met over holiday. Uh, Legislative, there's been some things going on. Um, we are done with the election finally, and, um, uh, the Georgia runoff was done on, last Tuesday. And what's significant about this and how it relates back to school boards is that now there is a 50-50, um, split between Republicans, Democrats in the Senate. And the deciding vote would then be held by the, um, the Vice President if there is a split. When it comes to passing a relief bill or, uh, you know, a second round, which they alluded to, that this first round is more about payment, they, uh, President-elect Biden has talked about, uh, passing another relief bill. When the Democrat, uh, with majority switching, um, from Republican to Democrat, it does make things easier to get at least to the floor of the Senate. I don't know if a lot of people realize that, you know, something can pass in the House, but the majority leader has to decide which bills get, uh, considered in the Senate. So, um, when it comes to school boards, uh, you know, more money for schools is great, and, uh, more relief with what we've dealt with is great. So that's, uh, encouraging as it, when you're looking at it from just a straight-up school board standpoint. Um, we did get, they did get some relief passed at the end of the month, uh, $900 billion relief bill. Of that, 82 billion is gonna be going to, um, to schooling, uh, and 54 billion is gonna be going to K-12 education. As far as the nuts and dollars and cents that we will get, I don't have a, you probably don't either yet, but, um, so it's, um, uh, we'll see how much we get. There'll be something, but, um, the, we're anticipating probably getting more after the administration takes over and whatnot, so. Um, our Education Secretary resigned, um, she was gonna be gone anyways, and we're gonna be having a new person named Miguel Perdona, who actually has classroom experience. And he's moved up the ranks, he's a big advocate for in-person learning, as, as we all are. Um, we've, we've definitely seen the, um, the effects of students having to do distance learning, and it's not, it's, it's not good. I mean, it's, uh, and, uh, hopefully with his leadership, help schools be more prepared. And that's pretty much where we're at right now, as far as, you know, legislative.
All right. Any further discussion or questions regarding that report? Okay, and then moving on to Superintendent Drake.
All right, thank you. Um, start with a few acknowledgements. Uh, first, I wanna just say thanks to Elan Jenkey and, uh, members of the District Office, as well as our custodial crew and nursing staff. Uh, we, uh, we are now mandated by the revised Governor's Protocols to offer in-house testing for COVID-19. Uh, it's voluntary, uh, it's targeted at staff that would work directly with students. But we were selected, uh, our date to begin this was January 5th, which was the second day coming, uh, out of the break. I believe the District received notification of some of the protocols, et cetera, on December 24th. Uh, and so, uh, all of this was compressed over what really was a well-deserved winter break for many of our staff that, uh, have been at this for quite a long time. But, um, in, uh, in true fashion, Elaine took the ball and ran with it and organized the staff and the training. Again, voluntary, but we had 50, I think 51 staff members that, uh, it's a saliva test. They took the test on a Tuesday, uh, received their results on a Thursday, if I understand the timelines correctly. And then we are anticipating, um, that we will offer this again on the 19th of January, although we're still waiting to receive verification of that from, uh, from the state.
And that was confirmed?
That was, okay.
This afternoon.
I wanna, uh, express some appreciation to the Activities Office, uh, again, with the things, um, kind of, uh, adjusting on the fly. I appreciate the work that Derek has done and our coaches and advisors in working with the condensed winter season and initiating, uh, all of the additional protocols and safety measures that are now in place to, uh, as Mr. Lemke alluded to earlier, hopefully getting through, uh, season, um, without, uh, further delays or interruptions. And then I also want to acknowledge the work of the Staff Development Committee. They did a really nice job in putting, uh, a set of breakup sessions that will, uh, offer something to anyone. Basically, I think it's a very widely appealing set of, uh, courses they could take. And then the ripple training, uh, will have a positive impact on our climate and culture, both as staff members, but also as it relates to, um, the impact on our students as well. Uh, with that, I'll switch to the learning model. We, at, uh, 10 o'clock this morning, uh, we had a conference call with, um, members of the District, as well as both state and local, uh, health experts. We reviewed our plan, uh, or proposal to return to, um, in-person instruction for those families choosing to, uh, from 9:00 through 12:00, uh, beginning on January 18th, excuse me, January 20th, 20th, uh, and then going, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday thereafter until further notice. Again, 9:00, 12:00, in-person learning. Uh, we also reviewed a proposal that would put seventh and eighth graders, increase their in-person days to four days a week, uh, beginning February 1st. Uh, it was a good discussion. Uh, I can say that, uh, the plan received a favorable review on that conference call and support, uh, from our health experts. One of the things that they liked about it is that, uh, even as we're ramping up in-person learning again, um, because of the Monday, Wednesday, Friday versus the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, uh, there are three out of the five days when we would be at less than full capacity, uh, between our seventh through 12th grade students. And then on the ninth through 12th grade, um, it's somewhat speculative, but we're anticipating approximately 130 students, uh, will probably choose to remain 100% distance learning. That's been fluctuating a little bit now, uh, as the realization of in-person learning returning, um, becomes closer and closer. So we'll see how that all plays out. But, uh, again, my thanks to the, uh, staff and administration for putting the work in, uh, to come up with these, um, creative plans to get our students back in, in-person once again. Those I should probably indicate to, of course, those plans are contingent on continued favorable numbers, uh, with the COVID-19. We are now down to, um, a rate, I believe, now below 50. Uh, so we've seen four to five weeks of a fairly substantial decline, uh, in, in case rates. And then the incident rate of those tested has dropped as well, so hopefully that can continue. Uh, we do now have the presence of vaccinations taking place in the community, uh, for the 1A group, uh, we are 1B. And so hopefully, uh, within the next couple of months, uh, our school staff will start to see, um, the presence of opportunities to be vaccinated. For those staff members that are working with the testing or would have, um, more direct healthcare needs, um, we are being provided access to the vaccinations now. So that's a very promising, um, promising turn of events. Uh, on the facility side, uh, we've been working, um, you know, fairly aggressively on continued LED, uh, projects. They, they do improve the work and learning environment, they just give off a, a much better light. Um, and, uh, when you look at the rebates, which can be running upwards of 75% on those projects, and the reduced energy consumption, uh, they typically have a very attractive payback period. So, uh, we'll be working on several hallway projects, uh, the media center, and then the 1300 block, uh, which is down by our acquired bands areas. Revised schedule with Lincoln School, um, the substantial completion date has now been moved to February 26th, with the latest date for file completion, uh, listed as March 12th. Uh, we have, uh, been given strong assurance that there will be no further, uh, extensions of the, of the move-in dates from this, this point on. Provided that some of the, um, punch-out items are, are delineated at that time, uh, we should be able to see, uh, the District starting to move in to that space somewhere in that February 26th area. So that has been communicated both to other preschool and early childhood, as well as Children's Corner. Uh, strategic planning update, um, the District now has completed all of the, uh, committee work with the exception of facilities, uh, we will cover in the work session, the portrait of a graduate and the curriculum committee, uh, at this meeting, and then the, uh, student and staff climate and culture at the next January meeting, and talk about what our approach might be with facilities going forward. The next step will be communicating, uh, that work both, uh, more broadly to the staff and to the community, and then moving into a, uh, stage of the process where we develop strategies and tactics designed to meet the goals outlined in the plan. Uh, the Governor's order, uh, to reopen school or, um, allow, um, a shift to more in-person learning, uh, did come with a couple of, uh, of caveats. One was the presence of the two-week testing for staff. Uh, the other was a rollout process, uh, so that you're bringing students back into the building gradually. One that will be, and, and we are receiving some questions from the community, so the board is aware, um, there is an edict out there that directs all students to be wearing masks during their FIAID time. And so, um, this is, uh, basically in conjunction with the masking for practice and, uh, sporting events, uh, but there are concerns among some of our, uh, parents that this is not a healthy practice. Uh, we are, um, we will be working with our families to, uh, uh, figure out our way through, through this latest mandate on the masking side. Initially, there was a mandate that, in addition to the masks, all staff with, uh, working with either fellow staff members or students would be required to wear both a mask and a face shield. Um, they did, uh, the department did receive some probably pointed, um, commentary about that. Uh, they softened their stance on that, and so at this point, it is, uh, recommended, perhaps strongly recommended, but not required. Uh, we certainly will offer both types of PPE to all of our staff members. Frankly, I prefer, uh, to let the individual staff member make, uh, decision that fits their, uh, their best interests on whether they want to wear both. Otherwise, uh, the mask is the, uh, the mask is the standard. Uh, and then finally, uh, you have a copy of, uh, a really, really nice brochure on our early childhood programs, and, uh, wanna thank, um, Melissa and, um, for putting this together, and, uh, our Community Ed Department, Mary, uh, but a very nice document and a lot of exciting things going on, uh, for students and families in the area of early childhood education, uh, with exciting days ahead, uh, once we do, uh, finish our transition into, um, Lincoln School. Uh, so with that, I'll conclude my report unless there are any questions.
All right, thank you Superintendent Drake. We'll continue on our agenda for the general consent items, for consideration in this motion on minutes from December 14th school board meeting, and then, uh, consideration for, um, payment of bills and the treaty report. So Kirby Anderson, can you tell me on that one?
Yes, um, Melanie and I and Brett are, were scheduled to go through the bills today, and we went through with the business manager, and he pointed out that we had, uh, two payments this month to K-12. One, I think one of them was, uh, was, uh, held back for review, but, um, so that's why there was two of those this month. So he answered that question very well. We did get a bill for $2,750 for, uh, porta-potties for fall sports, so that was interesting. I found it interesting anyway. There was a lot of refunds, uh, for school activities have been canceled, so there's a lot of activity there, mostly small amounts. Um, we did make the first payment to the, uh, Balance Gymnastics Center for $16,000, and it sounds like that is going quite well down there, they're real busy, and it looks like it's working out quite well for, for us and for them. Um, the Lincoln Sound System went in, we, uh, had the bill come through for that, was one of, probably one of the punch-out items. $6,000 for the chiller, and according to Superintendent Drake's reports, um, and emails, it sounds like the chiller thing is coming along, um, better than what it was. Superintendent Drake also talked about the retrofits. We had $17,000 that went through to Cosette Electric, and again, um, we're looking at, you know, total 40,000 to 50,000 dollars in lighting, and we get 75 to 80% back on rebate, so it's a pretty good, pretty, pretty return. Higher quality lighting and also, uh, only paying a portion of it. And I think that that program is scheduled to end this year, right? 2021?
Yeah, according to, uh, Josh, I believe, at Cosette Electric.
Right, so, and I know we have, uh, food service hallways, um, there's a few other places in our, in Kennedy, and I think the other, the only question I can, is are there other buildings, some of our Adams or Bigland or McKinley, if there's any places there that they wanna do this and work with the, uh, with the building managers to see what we can do there to take advantage of those rebates. Other than that, um, overall, um, we're seeing about $2 million better this year than, than last year. There wasn't a lot of activity this month, but, uh, financially, we're on a pretty good foot, so. Thank you for, uh, for answering the questions you did, and I think everything's in order unless there's other questions.
Okay, and then we'll move to Elaine Jenkey, uh, HR Director for Personnel, efforts too.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items tonight under Personnel. Um, the first item would be Tao Dressel, ESL teacher at IQ Academy. Her last day is January 21st, and she currently teaches one ESL class with IQ Academy. Um, and then, um, we are working with the current, um, ESL teacher, um, Joy Miller, excuse me, yes, Joy Miller, and she's doing an aid work but getting her license, and she'll be transitioning, transitioning into this position, and you'll be seeing her for board hire, um, a little bit later, once her license has gone through. And that's all in the process right now. Support staff hires, Darren Rick's, um, custodian, a new custodian at the Roseville Education Center, which is replacing Ken Coons' halftime position, and then also halftime over at Lincoln School, once Lincoln School's up and running, and that's effective January 18. Um, and then Ken Coons, uh, his position has changed from halftime over at the Roseville Education Center to a full-time delivery custodian, and he replaces Ricky Thome, who retired, um, at the end of December. And so that was effective January 4th. So I recommend these personnel changes for board approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve the general consent items? So... I'll take Matt for the motion and...
Second.
Yep, please a second. Any discussion on these items? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Those are approved. New business, um, contains two different, uh, items. First, the tentative fiscal year '21 seniority list for our school district is something that was distributed... is something that was distributed in our packet. We have no need to have a motion on that, just first reading. That list will be distributed to the staff for their review, and then it will come back for approval. Other item of new business is looking for a motion to approve a contract between Minnesota College, Minnesota State Colleges and Universities and our school district for implicit bias and equity and inclusion discussion facilitation. And the contract would run from January 11th through the end of the month. So is anyone willing to offer that motion for approval?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved. We have our next regular board meeting on Monday, January 25th, here at the Media Center at 5:15. We'll stick around tonight for a robust work session where we will go through a variety of topics, including our strategic planning, which keeps getting bumped by COVID. And we'll talk about that as well, some budget timelines, the IQ Academy agreement, and E-Learning Day. So we have much to discuss, and we'll continue with that. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Moved.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second? Second by Natalie. Any discussion on that? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.